Officially so in that those items or properties that you acquire through the will is considered a bequeathed. Checked in with me earlier, saw that we went over. The meridian and the baseline, so this is the meridian, right? And this is the baseline. So like I was saying at the top, you have, you have, um, this is block A. So you would take the twenty-five thousand, which was the profit, which is the made. And then you want to divide that by a hundred and twenty-five thousand. There must be a broker for at least five years. Four Civil Rights Act of eighteen sixty-six is still good law in full force. Five, so without further ado, I'm gonna jump into it. Welcome to Study B, um, here with me Brian Boyd. Uh, basically, I'm gonna be holding a study session. Um, you guys could basically, uh, study with me all the way, uh, through this, the Florida State, excuse me, the Florida Real Estate. Um, guide, basically. So we're gonna go over the different chapters, which I believe there's nineteen chapters. Actually, there's twenty chapters. Uh, the twentieth chapters, uh, has to do with the real estate math. So we're gonna get into each chapter one by one. Each video is gonna be based on, on each, like a chapter. So we, right now, I'm doing chapter one. Actually, I have to do it over because I've lost that footage. So I'm re-recording chapter one. Um, so without further ado, let's get into it. Um, chapter one, Florida Real Estate. Sales Associate Pre-Licensee, uh, textbook, basically. So, uh, we wanna get prepared to, to take the, the state exam, the Florida State exam for, uh, real estate. So, Sales Associate, so let's get into it. Chapter one. Which is, um, chapter one is dealing with basically introduction, just like the introduction to real estate. So. So basically, chapter one is the introduction to the real estate business, right? So without further ado, let's get into it. Chapter one, uh, we're first talking about talk to talk. And talk to talk is basically where we break down the key terms involved in this chapter. Uh, these are basically the words in definition because the real estate lingo is like, it's very, very vast. And, um, it's very important, especially when you're dealing with the, with the test. Um, well, well, basically, real estate period, I'm guessing that you have to learn these word, words to have an understanding of the business. So, um, let's get into it. Um, the first word is absentee owner, um, which is a property owner who does not reside on the property and who usually really, excuse me, relies on property manager to observe or oversee the, the investment, his investment or her investment. Um, excuse me, the next. The next one is, the next word is appraisal. Uh, appraisal is a supported, defended estimate of the value of property rights as of a given date. Okay, so that is what an appraisal is. Uh, an appraiser, any person, the next word, I'm sorry, is appraiser. Any person who is a, a trainee, licensed or, or certified real estate appraiser. That's what an appraiser is, someone who is basically a trainee, licensed or certified real estate appraiser. Um, the next word is business opportunity brokerage. This is the marketing and sale of going, uh, concern operation. Uh, Florida requires that business brokers have a real estate license to market business opportunities. Okay, so that's what a business opportunity brokerage is. So Florida requires that business brokers have a real estate license to market business opportunities. So you have to have, in other words, you have to have a, a broker's license or your real estate license to market, uh, business opportunities, which is, I'm guessing that those business opportunities being the transition, transaction between a buyer and the seller. So I'm, I'm guessing that's what that is. So business opportunity brokerage, right? The marketing and sale of a going concern operation. Okay, alright, uh, next word is comparative market analysis. Excuse me, an inform, excuse me, an informal estimate of market value performed by a real estate licensee for the seller to assist in arriving at an appropriate listing price. Or if working with the buyer, an informal estimate of market value to assist the buyer in arriving at an appropriate offering price. So that's what the comparative market analysis is, which is the CMA. So that, this word right here is gonna be very big, so please pay attention to it. Um, get familiar with what it means. And, um, as we go through the chapters, you know, whenever you see CMA, uh, make sure you, like, you know, basically stay, stay in tune to see what exactly it is about. Um, so I'm gonna go over that definition one more time. An informal estimate of market value performed by a real estate licensee for the seller to assist in arriving at an, excuse me, appropriate listing price. Or if working with the buyer, an informal estimate of market value to assist the buyer in arriving at an appropriate offering price. Okay, so, um, comparative market analysis, which is, this, this is something that we as, um, we, you know, once I become, or once you become, uh, on real estate sales associate, this is what you will basically be preparing, uh, which is a CMA, which you'll be preparing it for your, your buyer or your seller. And, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm guessing this, this has to do with the market value of, like, what the value of that particular property would be. Also, the different, you know, different, um, costs or fees associated with the buying and selling of that property. So, um, which we're gonna get into more details of breaking out what a CMA is. So just, just keep, you know, make note of that. Uh, excuse me, next word is dedication. But the deliberate transfer of land by its owner for publicly, excuse me, public use and accepted for such use by the public. Dedication is a deliberate transfer of land by its owner for public use and accepted for such use by the public. So from my understanding, the dedication is like, for example, if you dedicate, let's say that you're a developer, right? And you, um, have a subdivision and you have, let's say, streets that are in your subdivision, right? The neighbor, the neighboring streets or the neighborhood streets. You can dedicate those streets to, um, to the government, if I'm not mistaken, or you can dedicate them to the city, uh, you know, to whoever, to the public. And whoever basically takes, takes that property or takes that, let's say, that road now becomes responsible for that road. So they will be the ones that basically pay for the maintenance and so forth. But you dedicate that to them so they can use it, like, not use it, but like, I, I guess they will own the road, if that makes, makes sense. So like, sometimes when you see roads or streets that have, let's say, a certain name to it, then basically that, that belongs to, you know, whoever, whoever that, that name is or like that company is. So that's just what my understanding is. Uh, moving along, farm area. A selected and limited geographical district to which a sales associate devotes special attention and study. So farm area is a deliberate transfer of land, excuse me, I'm sorry, wrong, wrong definition. Farm area, a selected and limited geographical district to which a sales associate devotes special attention and study. Okay, so farm area is basically, that would be like your stomping grounds as far as a sales associate. You know, you, 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 um, let's just say, for example, uh, let me see, bigger place, the Pembroke Pines, right? In the Pembroke Pines area, like you, that's where you devote yourself to basically do business and, or you, you scout that area. You know that area in and out, you know, like the back of your hand because you, you basically have devoted yourself to that particular area. That would be your farm area, right? Which makes sense because you're plowing and you're, you know, cultivating, you know, you're, you're farming it to basically, to grow your business off of that area or to make money off of that area. Build, you know, get, build networks or build, uh, clientele's, um, relationship. Um, buyers and sellers and, you know, getting to know the neighborhood and getting to know the, the area. So that's farm area, okay? Moving along, follow-up is a post-closing communication initiated by a licensee to maintain customer contact and goodwill. Well, obviously, it's like self-spoken or self-explanatory rather. Uh, follow-up is basically what a sales associate would do, let's say, after you, um, spoke to a, uh, a client and you basically gave them a couple of weeks to think about something or go over something or, uh, it's basically reaching back out to that, to that client to follow up, to see, you know, where they at, making sure everything is okay with them. So it's a post-closing communication, you know, initiated by the licensee, which would be you or me, to maintain customer contact and goodwill. So you basically make sure you're in good standard, just checking up to make sure everything is good, everything is okay with them. Uh, if they need anything, uh, maybe some type of, some type of assistance or, or guidance on, on certain things that they might or might not need, but you ask to find out, you know, it's goodwill. You wanna check in with them to make sure everything is good. So that's what the followers, follow-up is for and, um, what it'll be used for. Uh, next word is property management. Okay, property manage, excuse me, property management is the process of directing, controlling, operating, and maintaining real estate for a third party. So property management is basically being a property manager, basically managing someone else's property. So for example, you have some, some owners that are, um, if we did, did we just? What is that word in, in these terms? Absentee owner, this goes and goes back into absentee owner, which is a property owner who does not reside on the property and who usually relies on a property manager, which, you know, deals with the property management, to oversee the investment, right? His or her investment. So that's what a property manage, what, what property management is, the process of that, of directing, controlling, operating, and maintaining real estate for a third party. So, and, um, that's what a property management, what property management is, that's what it is, the process of that. Next word is real estate brokerage. Uh, real estate brokerage is a commercial activity in which the sale, purchase, leasing, rental, exchange, or management of real property is conducted by qualified and licensed individuals acting either for themselves or for others for compensation. So real estate brokerage is basically, you know, what, uh, it's a brokerage or, um, the, you know, that's what the, the real estate brokerage is. I guess that would be the collective activity of what the sales associate, the broker, you know, hand in hand, what they do, which is, um, the activity in which sale, purchase, leasing, rental, exchange, or management of real property is conducted by qualified and licensed individuals. Right? Either acting for themselves because you can have, basically, let's say, you're acting for yourself. Um, you can sell your own home, um, or you can buy your own home and you can be a real estate agent and you're acting for yourself, or you could be a broker in which you're acting for yourself to help someone sell a home or buy a home. Or you can be working for that, that individual broker. As a sales representative, you, as a sales agent rather, a real estate seller, sales agent, you have to work upon the broker. And that broker is who's gonna pay you your commission, you get what I'm saying? You don't do anything by yourself as a sales associate. You have to be registered on the, a broker, so. We'll get more into details as we read up on chapter one. Um, next one is, uh, subdivision plat map, which is the layout of a subdivision showing lots, roads, and other structural aspects of importance. So a subdivision plat map is usually what a developer uses to, um, to, to basically get approved to, to do a subdivision, if I'm not mistaken, it's a plat map. And that has to be presented to, if I'm not mistaken, like the, that county to get approval to okay the plat map for you to basically start by constructing, if I'm not mistaken. We'll get more into it, but basically, a subdivision plat map is, is used by, is needed by, used by developers. But it's the layout of a subdivision showing lots, roads, and other structural aspects of importance. Um, USPAP, USPAP, um, is, this is the next word, rules and guidelines that must be followed by any professional conducting an appraisal, right? So the USPAP is rules and guidelines that must be followed by any professional conducting an appraisal. Okay, they're the ones that enforce that. Or thus what, you know, has those rules. Alright, next is the areas of, excuse me. Uh, next one is areas of critical concern. Uh, describe the various activities of real estate brokerage. Distinguish among the five major sales, uh, specialties. Excuse me, identify reasons why property management has grown in importance. Explain the appraisal process and the role of an appraiser. Understand the mortgage process and the role of mortgage loan originators. Explain the three phases of development and construction. Distinguish among the three categories of residential construction. Alright, so let's get into it, uh, the introduction overview. Alright, in Florida, the Florida Real Estate Commission, commonly referred to as FREK, oversees and regulates the real estate license law and licensed individuals who, or participate, who participate in the real estate business. FREK defines the term real estate business as a vocation in which real property forms, excuse me, the stock in trade that is bought, sold, leased, excuse me, or rented. Okay, uh, so again, FREK defines the term real estate business as a vocation in which real property forms the stock in trade that is bought, sold, leased, or rented. Okay, real estate, uh, represents a very large portion of the overall wealth of our country, particularly in the state of Florida. Uh, property values, mortgage markets, so excuse me, property values, market, market. What am I talking about, man? Hold on one second, read that over, one second. Alright, so introduction, uh, in Florida. In Florida, the real, excuse me, the Florida Real Estate Commission, commonly referred to as FREK, oversees and regulates the real estate license law and licensed individuals who participate in the real estate business. FREK defines the term real estate business as a vocation in which real property forms the stock in trade that is bought, sold, leased, or rented. Real estate represents a very large portion of the overall wealth of our, our country, particularly in the state of Florida. Okay, property values, mortgage, mortgage markets, and investment opportunities evidence the role of the real estate and its impact in the nation's econ, economy. Other types of businesses and industries are also dependent upon real estate activities such as property management, appraisers, banking industry, development, and construction businesses. Uh, real estate is a business of many specializations, okay? A professional real estate licensee should possess specialized knowledge in the following areas, which is property transfer, which property transfer is a licensee needs, excuse me, a licensee needs to understand the details of transferring legal title from one party to another. An interest in real property can be transferred by deed, will, lease, or other legal methods. Additionally, a licensee ne, needs to understand the entire process from, from creation of a real estate contract through final closing of title, okay? Uh, next is the market condition, this is the, the next one. So you, you have property transfer, you have market conditions, alright? Marketing, market conditions, a licensee should understand current interest rates and availability in financing. Uh, relationship between real estate supply and demand in his or her particular market area and the history of sold properties. The licensee should also have an understanding of future market trends that will be driving, be the driving force of tomorrow's sales. Alright, sales and marketing. Being a professional and effective real estate licensee requires understanding the significance of past sales of similar properties. By understanding past sales, licensees can establish a price range that will ideally result in properties being bought and sold in the shortest amount of time and for the best possible price. Once a licensee has established the proper market value of a home listing price, the next step is to procure a purchaser through the various marketing techniques available. These techniques include drafting effective advertisements, participating in the multiple listing service, MLS, offering open house presentations, and effective showing of real estate to potential purchasers. There is an old saying in the real estate business, you have to circulate to percolate. Alright, brokerages. A real estate brokerage is a business that performs the actual day-to-day operations of assisting the general public in one or more of the various real estate areas and specialties. They include sales and leasing. For most real estate brokerages, sales and leasing comprise, comprise the bulk of their business activities. All real estate brokerages must have at least one active broker to be responsible for the daily activities of the brokerage. Although many sales associate may work for a brokerage, it is ultimately the broker who actually supervises and is legally responsible for all actions of the sales, sales associates and office employees. Uh, the license associate is an agent of the broker and must not be directly employed by the members of the public. It is actually the broker who has the necessity or the necessary contractual relationship between the brokerage and a buyer or seller. It is important to remember that although a sales, as a sales associate works directly with the public, he or she does this on behalf of the broker. Individuals working in a real estate brokerage should possess expert information about real estate that is not commonly known by the general, general public. For instance, preparing contracts and understanding other complex documents such as closing statements and mortgages. Generally speaking, it is more efficient for a member of the public to employ a real estate professional because the, the process of finding the right property to buy or the process of selling and finding a qualified buyer is, is time-consuming. The licensee deals with these complex matters on a daily basis and therefore is better prepared to make sales and closings a smoother process. Okay, uh, many successful real estate licensees have chosen to specialize in a particular area of their community known as farm areas. By utilizing the process known as farming, licensees become familiar with the properties and the property owners. Due to their continuing contact with the, with the farm areas, licensees are prepared to immediately provide marketing and sales assistance upon request. Being special, specialist in a particular neighborhood also allows the licensees to market their personal expertise in addition to marketing the subject properties. Alright, it is advisable that real estate licensees contract their clients within a reasonable time after a closing. This type of contract, contact, excuse me. This type of contact known as a follow-up will promote goodwill between the client and the licensee and help ensure client satisfactions. Okay, there are five major areas of sales that a licensee may specialize in. Residential, which defines as facilities where people live and reside. The term residential property includes single-family homes, condominiums, duplexes, and apartment complexes. The majority of real estate licensees specialize in the sale and purchase of owner-occupied residential properties. Okay, uh, number two, commercial. Uh, participating or practicing in commercial investment real estate usually requires expect, expert knowledge in investment analysis and cash flows. These properties include shopping centers, warehouses, office buildings, and others. Licensees should be caution, cautious about representing themselves as experts in this area unless properly qualified. Number three, industrial. Industrial includes properties located in industrial parks or properties otherwise zoned for industrial use such as manufacturing and distribution. Alright, number four, agricultural. Agricultural includes farms and other agricultural lands such as citrus groves and timberland operations. Number five, businesses, also called business brokerage or business opportunity brokerage. Okay, this area specializes in the marketing and sales of up and running businesses, going concern operations, and understanding of both tangible assets. Example, example, inventory, and intangible asset, example, goodwill or business reputation is required. Alright, so early I was talking about the business opportunity brokerage, you know, did I, that's what I was talking about? Yeah, probably was, business opportunity brokerage, right? And I was saying that it was, you know, this, the area how, I guess, everything operates with the, um, with the, um, with the brokerage. But basically what it is, business opportunity brokerage, this, this area specializes in the marketing, sales of up and running businesses. So this is the selling of actual businesses, basically, like up and running businesses. Um, okay, so let's move along, that's what that is. Uh, property management, okay? Property management is defined as the management of properties owned by others for compensation. Um, a property manager's goal is to generate the greatest amount of net income while at the same time maintaining the property in good condition. Typically, a property manager will be responsible for locating tenants, collecting rent, providing maintenance, and handling landlord-tenant relationships. Property managers are paid a fee for their services, typically a percentage of gross, of gross rent. Uh, recently, property management has become a growing industry in Florida due to the increase of absentee owners, individuals who own the subject property but do not personally manage or reside on the property. Alright, additionally, property management has become popular because of the complex nature of investment real estate. Okay, property valuation. This process or the process of estimating the value of real estate is accomplished through the, the prep, excuse me, the preparation of an appraisal, right? So this is property valuation, uh, which is associated with appraisal. The majority of appraisals are performed at the request in, in instance of mortgage lenders who require an appraisal before they will approve a mortgage loan. Mortgage lenders must have reliable assurances, assurances that the, that the value of the property will provide sufficient collateral, which is security for the mortgage loan. Alright, although appraising is still considered to be a service of real estate, only individuals who are state-certified or licensed appraiser can perform these services for a fee of, fee for banks. For a fee for banks, okay? It is permissible for a real estate licensee to provide, um, valuation services, but they must not misrepresent themselves as being either a state-certified or licensed appraiser, okay? So it is permissible for a real estate licensee to provide valuation services, but they must not misrepresent themselves as being either a state-certified or a licensed appraiser. So I'm guessing that means that it's permissible to, for us to basically make, uh, you know, property valuations. However, we just can't say that we're appraisals, we're certified appraisers, because you have to be certified and licensed to be an appraiser. So you can't make that, 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 that claim. That claim, basically, um. And with that being said, I don't, I don't even think you can get paid to, you can't get a pay, like you can't get paid to appraise. Because you gotta be certified, you get what I'm saying? So I guess you can, if you can make uh, property valuations. Um, to, and I'm guessing this has to do with the um, with the CMA, um, what we were talking about before, right? So. Let's keep on going. Alright, so the Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice, which is the USPAP. USPAP is the body of rules and gar- and guidelines that must be followed by the appraisers. Uh, failure to abide by USPAP regulations when performing an appraisal could subject the appraiser to. Disciplinary sanctions. Uh, real estate licensees cannot perform appraisals, but rather perform valuation services. Commonly referred to as a comparative market analysis, which is the CMA. Which is an informal method of estab- estimating a subject property's value. Licensees will research the sales data of similar properties, comparable properties known as comps. And review their past selling prices, current listing prices and identify comps that were previously listed for sale but did not sell. Okay, once all the data has been accumulated and reviewed, the licensee can establish. A range of value for the subject property and suggest an initial listing price. Due to the CMA's less complex nature, it is not considered to be an appraisal. And will not be relied upon by lending institutions. Okay, CMA, CMAs are exempt from. USPAP regulations, although it is permissible to charge a fee for performing a CMA. Licensees will typically provide the service as a free courtesy. Okay, the brokerage price opinion, which is the BPO, is another form of a CMA and used by banks. When evaluating short sales. Okay, um. Appraisers are compensated on a flat fee basis depending upon the difficulty of their task and the amount of time involved. In the appraisal preparation. Uh, pursuant of USPAP ethics rules. Appraisers are not com- compensate, excuse me, compensated on a percentage. Of the subject property's value to avoid a conflict of interest situation, okay? Um, next is financing. Financing is a business of providing funds for real estate transactions. Okay, the majority of real estate transactions require the buyer to obtain financing in order to have the necessary funds to purchase. There are several major sources of lendable funds for real estate financing, including commercial banks, savings and loan associations. Mortgage banks, credit unions and life insurance companies. There we go, so it's savings. And loan associations, mortgage bankers, credit unions and life insurance companies, okay? Licensees should have a general understanding of mortgage lending practices in order to best serve their clients. The mortgage brokerage business is a separate industry that requires a separate and distinct list license. Mortgage brokers and mortgage bankers must be licensed in the state of Florida. Alright, counseling. Real estate counseling has become an important part of the real estate industry. Due to the complex nature of large scale commercial and in the investment real estate. A real estate counselor acts as a consultant by performing research on the subject, real property. And its community location and making recommendations about the subject property's ultimate value. Real estate consultants or counselors are typically paid either on an hourly basis or predetermined. Fee based upon the nature of the of the job and the counselor's experience and qualifications. Typically, real estate coun- counselors will have es- excuse me, extensive amounts of education. Knowledge and above all else in abundance of experience, okay? Development in constitute in construction, development in construction. Real estate development and construction is a. Fascinating aspect of the real estate business, requiring many skills and an understanding of future community. Uh, growth, excuse me. Uh, land acquisition. The first step in the process of development. And construction is a, is to locate the acquired suitable land. In order for a new development to occur, land must be available at a reasonable price and has the capability of being developed. Developers should always consider current zoning laws and governmental planning policies before acquiring land. Alright, uh, subdivision and development. The next step in the in development and construction is the process of. Preparing the land site by subdividing the the parcel into individual smaller parcels. The developer will also typically install infrastructure, which is defined as. The sewer, water, electrical streets and storm drains necessary for the support of the development. Subdivision plat map recording. Okay, prior to actual development and construction, developers must submit a subdivision plat map. Of the proposed project to the applicable local government. This subdivision plat map, which must be approved by the local government. Will identify where streets and lots will be located. Once approved, the subdivision plat map is recorded in the public records of the county. Where the subject property is located. Okay, so basically, I said earlier that. The county would have to approve it and actually it's the local government that has to approve the um, subdivision plat map. The counties who record it, like they um, basically uh, put it in the public records, right? So moving along, uh, dedication. Uh, frequently all, excuse me, frequently after a development is. Is completed, a homeowner's association is charged with maintaining, maintaining, okay? Is charged with maintaining streets and other common facilities. However, in some instance. Says the developer transfers ownership of the streets and utilities to the applicable local government through the process of dedication. Alright, afterwards, the local government is then responsible for maintenance and upkeep. It's like we were talking about earlier about the dedication. Alright, uh, next is construction. There are three types of residential construction which will, which uh. Licensees should be familiar with. There's the speculative, speculative. Which is constructing a speculative or spec house in a type of development wherein the builder actually owns the land. Uh, constructs, constructs a house to the to the builder's taste and satisfaction. And then offers the complete construction for sale to the general public, okay? Number two, tract. Tract house construction is a type of spec. Speculative is basically now where the builder actually owns the land, right? Constructions and houses of to the builder's taste and satisfaction and then offers the completed construction for sale. To the general public. Okay, tract, uh, the tract house construction is a type of spec construction which involves some input from the buyer. Uh, for design and layout of a particular floor plan or model. Sorry about that, people. Just happened here. I'll be right back. Alright, um, so where were we? Uh, tract. Alright, the tract house construction is a type of spec construction which involves some input from the buyer. For design and layout of a particular floor plan or model previously chosen by the developer, okay? Typically, a buyer will select his or her lot and then choose from a number of floor plans that have been approved. For the particular subdivision. Alright, number three is accustomed, uh, which is a custom home construction. Is a type of development which provides for the builder to consult with the landowner. And construct a home in accordance with the landowner's wishes and designs, okay? Uh, moving along, the role of government, uh, the role of government always impacts the way we do business. And real estate is no exception. There are three entities of government which influence real estate decisions. One is the local government. Uh, without question, local government is the most prominent from all government. Regulation concerning real estate, alright, uh. The local governments implement zoning laws, building codes and establish property taxes. Uh, through authority known as police powers, okay, so these police powers is what. Are used to, again, implement zoning laws such as building codes. And establish property taxes and so forth, alright? Uh, the local government is authorized to enact laws to protect the health, safety and welfare. Through its use of police powers, okay? Uh, the next one is the state government, uh, the state. State government, um, the state of Florida has implemented many laws protecting our environment and water waterfront properties. The Department of uh, of Environmental Protection, which is DEP. Uh, is the lending governmental agency in this area. Lending, the leading, I'm sorry. The Department of Environmental Protection or DEP is the leading governmental agency in this area. Which is the state government and the state government, you know, the state of Florida. Has implemented many laws protecting our environment and waterfront properties, okay? Uh, next is the federal government. Federal government. There are various federal agencies and regulations that influence real estate ownership. They include the Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD, the Department of Veterans Affairs, which is the VA. Uh, the Federal Housing Administration, which is FHA, and the Federal Reserve System, which is the Fed, okay, um. So, professional organizations. Real estate licensees have the opportunity to join various real estate trade organizations such as. The National Association of Realtors, NAR, the Florida Association of Realtors, FAR. And their local board association. The licensees are prohibited from using the term realtor. Unless they are current members in good standing with local, state and national associations of realtors. Alright, the National Association of Realtors, NAR, has established and published a code of ethics. Which sets forth high standards of conduct that should be followed by all of its members, okay? So that concludes, uh, chapter one. We're gonna get into the summary and some some up number, um, excuse me, sum up chapter one. Then we're gonna get into the quiz. Alright, so let's get into the summary. The various activities of real estate brokers include sales and leasing. Property management, property valuation, financing and cons- and counseling, sorry. Uh, the five major areas of sales specialty includes residential, commercial, industrial, agriculture and businesses. Alright, property management has become important in Florida due to an increase in absentee ownership, alright? Comparative market of analysis, which is the CMA we spoke about before. Although an estimate of property's values um, differs from a true appraisal. In its complexity and depth, real estate licensees perform CMAs rather than appraisals, alright? Three phases of development and construction involve, one, land acquisition. Two, subdividing and developing, and three, construction. In speculative building, the builder builds a home on his own land in hopes of selling it. In custom building, on the other hand, the builder builds a pre-arranged home on an owner's property. Okay, so that's. It's basically that is, let's get into the quiz, man, chapter one quiz, uh. Builder Kate buys a lot in Blue Bayo, oh, Bayou, sorry, plantation subdivision and builds a single family house according to plans. And specifications she selected. After the house is completed, she sells. She sells it to someone who saw the for sale sign posted in the front yard. This type of development construction is known as a, alright, so let's go back over it, um. She got it from a plantation, um, value plantation subdivision and builds a single family house according to plans. And specifications she selected, she selects. After the house is completed, she sells to someone. So this will be. She bought a lot from the developers, right? And then she basically builds a single family home. According to plans and specifications, she selects, she selects. Okay, so this is either gonna be a speculative or tracked, right? And. The speculative would have, it's not gonna be a speculative, sorry, take that back, cause that would have mean that the developer would have already built the house. And she just bought the house in the plot or in the um, lot. Um, according to this, she bought the lot from the subdivision and builds a single family house. According to plans and spec- speculations or spec- specification she selects. So she select those, so that would make this a track. So, uh, answer for number one be B track. Which the the choices were A, custom, B, track, C, speculative, or D, co-op. You could pick whatever you want and we could go over the answers and see, you know, what the answers are after this. Number two. A local government acquires ownership of streets and other infrastructure. Examples, storm sewers and thereafter becomes responsible for maintenance of those acquired items through the process of. Okay, A, dedication, B, police power, C, eminent domain, D, contamination. Alright, uh, this is obviously gonna be A, which is dedication, because it said that they acquire ownership. Of the streets and other infrastructure, so and they basically became responsible for the maintenance, so that's dedication, which will be A. Number three, sales associate Tom decides to focus prim- primarily on selling properties located in his own. Residential neighborhood. He constantly reviews current information about past sales and present. Homes for sale. He tries to get new clients by sending them direct mail information about the availability of his services. Tom is developing sales and marketing skills through which type of procedure. Alright, A, farming, B, exclusive right to sell, C, mass media, D, multiple listing service, okay? Alright, so Tom decides to focus primarily on selling properties located in his own residential neighborhood. That right there is the telltale sign. He's basically farming, right? So the answer to that is A. Moving along number four, prior to construction and subdivision, developer must submit which of the following for approval to the local government? Alright, prior to construction, constructing a subdivision, A, a subdivision plat map, B, restrictive. Um, con- con- convenance, covenants? Covenant, uh, C. Topographical survey, D, phase one soil test. Well, the answer to this one is gonna be the subdivision plat map, right? Because that's what you need to submit to the. Local government in order to be able to to do the construction. Alright, moving on, number five, all of the following are sources of funds available for mortgage lending except. Alright, so is it A, life insurance companies, B, commercial banks. C, credit unions, D, federal reserve system, okay? Uh, this question, I know, we know life insurance companies, facts. Uh, commercial banks, facts, credit unions, facts. The federal reserve system. You know, we don't, they don't lend us money, like they don't lend the the mortgage, like lenders money, but they actually do. I mean, they don't lend the, what do you say, mortgage juror money, right? But they do lend banks money. That's who the banks deal with to get their monies. So I'm gonna go with D. Uh, number six, is it permissible for a licensed sales associate to perform a CMA for a fee? Number, is it, is A is yes, providing the sales associate calls it an appraisal. B, yes, although it is usually performed as a marketing courtesy. C, no. C, no, the service must be done for fee for free. D, no, only licensed appraisers can perform an appraisal for a fee, okay? So going back in the uh. In the information that we read, uh chapter one, they did discuss that. Uh as a sales associate, you could do a C M A, you can charge a fee, however, it is. You know, commonly just done as 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 basically, you know, for free, basically, right? Uh so my answer is gonna be B, yes, although it is unused, it is usually performed as a marketing courtesy. You can charge a fee, um but you cannot basically say that you're appraising a house, cuz the C M A is not an appraisal. So, you know, it's not an appraisal, it's your um valuating the house, so you're just making valuations to to, you know, to. Give an estimated value of 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 the property that your seller is trying to sell or your buyer is trying to buy, right? So go with that, the um answer to number six should be B. Uh moving along number seven, an individual who owns rental real estate. In a location other than where they reside is known as. A prospect, B absentee owner, C property manager, D investor. Okay, so an individual who owns rental real estate in a location other than where they reside is known as what? This is gonna be be an absentee owner, um cuz they're absent, they're not around, they're not, you know, they don't live. Uh near the location to where they own property, alright, so that will be that answer, uh which will be B. Number eight, if an appraiser was paid on a percentage basis, for example. One percent of the appraised value, how could this result in a conflict of interest? If an appraiser was paid on a percentage basis, for example, one percent of the appraised value, how could this result in a conflict of interest? A, the appraiser would only appraise properties that were very expensive. B, payment on a percentage basis could lead to price fixing. C, the appraiser might be more inclined to inflate the value of the property to increase the appraisal fee. D, paying an appraiser on a percentage basis is not a conflict of interest. Alright, so my answer is gonna be C, the appraiser might be more inclined to inflate the value of the property to increase the appraisal fee. So basically, it'd be a conflict of interest because. Now you you you're you're appraising property for a higher amount than than what it would be really truly valued at. Based just so you could make sure that you have a bigger and better commission, however, that's bad for like, for example, the banks. Or the lenders who are using the appraisers to guarantee the security of the, you know, their of their their lendings, so. Alright, moving along, number nine, the Florida State Agency. That is primarily involved with issues of real estate development on coastal lands is. A, Department of Business and Professional Regulation, B, Florida Real Estate Commission, C, Secretary of State. D, Department of Environmental Protection, okay? This is gonna be the D E P, right? Uh which is the Department of um Environmental Protection. Because they're the ones that's responsible for the environmental and waterfront homes. So it says the Florida State Agency that is primarily involved with issues of real estate development on coastal lands is. So that's waterfront homes, which will basically be covered on the Department of Environmental Protection, so the answer will be D. Uh moving along, number ten, uniform standards of professional appraisal. Practice, which is USPAP, uh U S P A P must be adhered to when the appraiser prepares which of the following? A appraisal, B comparative market analysis, C survey, D investment analysis. Uh basically, appraiser is, they do appraisals, you know? I don't know of them doing the C M As, the the compar- pairs, comparative market and analysis. That's something that we would do as a sales associate, uh. A survey, um. A survey is, I'm not sure who does the survey, that could be like the government that does the survey, um. Or an inspector or something like that, uh investment analysis, that's not done by an appraiser, an appraiser. If I'm not mistaken, but an appraisal, that's where the U USPAP uh adhered, you know? To when appraiser prepares which of the following, an appraisal, okay, that's, it's an appraisal. So that'll be eight, uh the next one, eleven, which type of government is reasonable? Excuse me, which type of government is responsible for enacting zoning laws, okay? Which type of government is responsible for enacting zoning laws? Is it A, local, B, state, C, federal, D, the United Nations, okay? Um if I'm not mistaken, the zoning laws has to do with the state. The state of Florida, because they have the the power to police, uh police power, which they, you know, can. If if I'm not mistaken, right, um local government. Local government, which you have to do the plot. So. I'm gonna go with local gov, um. I'm gonna go with local government, man, the reason why is because I remember when you do the subdivision. When you do the subdivision, when you do the subdivision, I'm sorry, you basically have to, um. You have to uh propose the plat map to the local government, so they have to be the ones that deal with the zoning. So I'm gonna go with local government. Okay, so. The local government was. Hold on, sorry. Alright. Moving along, what was that, eleven? I think that was, uh. Yeah, number eleven, um local, that'll be A. Um the next one, number twelve, all of the following are major areas of sales specialization except. So all of the following are major areas of sales specialization except. A industrial, B agricultural, C condominium, D residential. Okay, so I know residential. Condominium is 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 not a, it's not an area, that's a part of residential, you know, condominium. So it's it's residential in in the industrial and agricultural, so I'm gonna go with C condominium. It's not a, that's not an area of of specialization. Number thirteen, a supported defended estimate of the value of properties known as. A comparative market analysis, D, I mean, sorry, B dedication, C appraisal, D mortgage. Alright, and the answer to this is appraisal, which is defended estimate, a supported defended estimate is an appraisal, okay? Um number fourteen. A real estate con- um excuse me, a real estate counselor. A real estate counselor, A, is typically paid on a commission basis. Uh B must have a college degree to be qualified, C acts as a consultant. By performing research on the subject real property and then D usually holds a broker's license, okay? Um a real estate counselor is typically paid on a commission basis and the whole mu- must have a college degree to be qualified. Don't remember that, acts as a consultant by performing research on the subject, real property, okay? D usually holds a broker's license, I'm gonna go with C, uh. That's the one that best answers that question, uh number fifteen is laws enacted to protect the public health, safety. Or welfare are established through authority known as. So these are laws enacted to protect the public health, safety or welfare established through. Authority known as, A, caveat emptor, B, police powers. C, rest judi- 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 judikta? Judicator, uh rest judicator, D eminent eminent domain. Okay, these laws is police powers, so that's B, that's the answer to that one, alright, so. And that concludes chapter one, uh that's our quiz, um we go over the answers real quick. Real quick, real quick, hold on one second. See if I can get these answers up real quick. Okay. Yes. That's the practice exam. Alright, but where's the um answer key? There we go. Answer keys, come on. Chapter one, right, alright, so let's get it, let me open this back up. Uh one second people. Alright, so. Back to number one. Wow, I got that one wrong, bruh. So number one was C, I picked B, it says speculative. It's just crazy cuz I thought speculative was, hmm, guess I gotta read that over, man. I don't know why I felt that was, that was a tracked. Alright, so moving along, number two was A. Number three was A. Number four was A. Number five was D, number six was B. Number seven was B. Number eight was C. Number nine was D. Um. Number ten was A, number eleven was A. Number twelve was. Number twelve was C. Okay, number thirteen was C. And number fourteen was also C. And number fifteen was B, so I got one wrong, so let's go back and see why did I get that wrong? Um we were just, and that was at towards the end of the chapter. Alright? So, alright, so here it is, let's get into it. It says it's. A speculative, a speculative, speculative, which is construction. Constructing is speculative or spec house in a type of development wherein the builder actually owns the land. Constructs a house to the to the builders taste. And satisfaction. And then offers the complete construction for sale to the general public. Tracked, right, house construction is a type of spec. Construction which involves some input from the buyer for design and layout of a particular floor plan. Or model previously chosen by the developer. Typically, a buyer will select his or her lot and then choose from a number of floor plans that have been approved. For the particular subdivision. Hmm, okay. So. Let's go back and see what 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 did we miss on that, we missed something on that, the question and the wording or something. Okay. So going back to number one, let's read that again, okay? Alright, builder Kate. Buys a lot in Blue Bayo, oh, builder, that's the key word right there, builder, ladies and gentlemen. Builder, builder Kate buys a lot in Blue Bayou Plantation Subdivision, right, so she bought a lot. In Blue Bayou Plantation Subdivision. And build a single family house according to plans and says specification she selects. After the house is completed, she sells it to someone who saw the for sale sign posted in the front yard. This type of development slash construction is known as speculative, okay? Wow, they got me on that one, I got it, alright, well, that concludes chapter one, pay attention, cuz. Hmm, questions can be kinda tricky sometimes, it's all in the wordplay, so pay attention to that, man. If you gotta read the question over multiple times before you choose an answer, be sure to do that. That's the reason why it's very important to learn the lingo, learn these these terminologies that they're using in real estate right now, um today. So, um check us out next time, study B, be back with chapter two. See you guys.